Welcome, everybody, to the city council meeting for Monday, July 13th. If we have a call to order in the roll call, please, to establish your form.
Troy Zeller.
Here.
Bob Thomas.
Here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
James DeVito.
Here.
Terry McLuhan.
Here.
Mickey Snyder.
Here.
We have six.
All right. Let's pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, can you get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Tag it.
All right, we got any additions or anything, James?
A letter from Ms. Smith regarding new business, topic number one. She has had a death in the family and asked to be rescheduled to July 27.
Anything, Mickey?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, looking right at it, never mind. Okay, now I'm thoroughly confused.
What?
Deputy in the Congress. Okay, never mind, I guess this is...
Any other additions? All right. Oh, Mickey.
Okay. Dyslexia tonight, I guess. I thought I had asked to have a referral back to the legal actions we could take on 2223. And David had seconded.
It's down here under new business number two.
Where we have Mr. Thomas.
No, that's municipal league.
But that's...
It's both. Oh, it's a combination?
See the little, see the slash mark?
Okay.
Same, that's the same as it was worded before.
Well, no, that's two different things. The update that Bob and I have from the conference and then a separate legal discussion.
Look at the slash right here.
It's the same thing.
The slash and then discussion.
Yeah, I see the slash, but it's two different issues.
It means either or.
All right, any other...
Talking about both of them.
Yeah. All those in favor of the agenda as presented?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Everybody got a copy of the minutes and read them and get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Tag it.
Any changes, corrections? All right, all those in favor of the minutes that submitted, sing five, sing aye.
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 All right. At this point, we don't have anything on the commissions or anything, so as soon as Diane comes in, we can start our public comments. Laura Coker.
These two things are not the same at all. As Schwarzenegger says, I'm back. And the issue again is fluoride, but really, it's beyond fluoride. So I want to give some good news to the public. Dr. Contreras and I are in liaison with the Arkansas Department of Health, the Attorney General's Office, the Governor's Office, various senators, Bledsoe and Lynda Collins-Smith, on the fluoride mandate. So the Water Board is authorized to use chemical and physical treatments of the water to improve the quality, period. They are not authorized to administer medicine of any sort. The legislature is in violation of the Medical Practices Act in authorizing or mandating prescription medication, which specifically, in Act 197, is described maintaining a specific level of fluoride to prevent cavities. It clearly is intended and acts as a prescription. So therefore, the mandate is not lawful, and a group of us are working very hard to remedy that as quickly as possible. The reason I'm here tonight, in addition, is to note that there's been some discriminatory conduct in the matter of reporting these public meetings whereby not one medical fact or opinion on law that I presented to the entire council in all these many months, bless you for listening, has been reported in the media. And that represents selective reporting. Gentlemen, a month ago, Josh presented something on conduct regarding law enforcement and being considered a vagrant. That was reported, but my comments were not reported. That is discriminatory. And in addition, I just advise the council that the decision to not pursue or not encourage the pursuit of the investigation of the civil rights that are lost by virtue of this 197 imposition, this fluoride mandate, which includes religious rights, Medical Practices Act, between a client and their individual medical provider, and parental rights, in dismissing those, the impression is that this council disregards that fundamental right of moral conscience. Now, moral conscience and religious right is never absolute. We have the right to believe absolutely what we believe. We do not have the right to impose our beliefs on others. So with regards to vaccines and gay marriage, you know, there are, it's not absolute, but I say this council's been remiss, so God bless. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
One more time.
All right, our first order of unfinished business is ordinance number 2226, amending code for regarding clarifying pedaling. James?
Moved to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2226 on its second reading by title only.
Tag it.
Mickey?
This is the food truck issue, right?
No.
No, not the pedaling, different.
Well, okay, same thing. I'm sorry, my notes are everywhere. This is what we have a meeting on, a workshop on, unfortunately, at the end of August, because it's the only time we could all get together. I would like to see this issue postponed until we do that, because there's actually two sections to it. They should be worked on and read separately. They're too diverse to have them both together, okay? So I would like to see these others separated now and worked on from there, or just plain postponed until we have the workshop, because the workshop will make a whole lot of difference in what we're doing on here. And the other thing I would like to say is if there is a vote on this issue, that since this is direct competition, this whole instigation of what's being discussed is in direct competition to James, that he needs to just, on moral and ethical reasons, there's no law, abstain from the vote. Which I meant to bring up at the last one and got sidetracked. Can I see that? Can I see this one?
Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I need to change the ordinance number to 2227.
Change the number?
Did everybody get that? Change the number to 2227.
Yes, please. 2227.
Okay. Any other comments? Your motion to...
I'll amend my motion to reflect the change in the number to 2227.
Tag it.
Okay. If there's no other further discussion, all those in favor of putting this on second reading by title only, sing five, we need a roll call?
Yeah. First.
Yeah, making a... I'm making the change for the number, 2227.
We can do that.
You can do that.
Okay. All those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now we'll have a roll call vote, putting it on the second reading by title only.
Mr. McLuhan?
Yep.
Ms. Zeller?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Snyder?
Nope.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
For two.
Mr. DeVito? Moved to approve ordinance number 222...
Whoa, whoa.
Just a reason.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Okay, ordinance 2227, an ordinance amending title of 4.48, subsections 01A and 01D of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code to clarify pedaling.
Moved to approve ordinance number 2227 on its second reading.
Tag it.
Any discussion? Mickey?
What's the hurry, guys? What is the damn big rush that we can't do a workshop before we go through this? Why you obviously don't care about ethics, morals, what have you, just want to hurry this thing through? The people that all this got started over aren't going to be able to do anything until we have this meeting. What is the rush and how come there's been absolutely no discussion on separating A and D? Two totally different issues. What's the problem with that? Y'all the ones that want to fly this thing through with no discussion, no work?
Apparently, you're the one that has the problem with it. We don't.
Yeah, we have one that makes it clear that this means this, and then we've got, yeah, I'm making a problem, because y'all aren't thinking this through and you're in a damn rush and there's no reason.
All right.
Rather than do it right the first time, oh, no, we can tweak it, which we never do.
Ms. Snyder? Please, all right. Any further discussion? Now we got a motion and a second, all those, we need a roll call?
No.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2227 on a second reading, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Yep. I vote aye. Okay. Our next order of business is Mr. Hammond's broken car window.
Motion to discuss.
Get a second?
Second.
All right.
Absolutely.
I think y'all have the police department report in there and a estimate from Dave Williams' body shop. Mr. McLuhan?
Mr. Mayor, by looking at the police report and by previous procedure by the city, it looks like everything's in order, you know, for his claim, and I make a motion that we pay it out of whichever department it should be paid. I don't... It would be Public Works, that's, I think, that's what was suggested previously, so that it'd be paid out of Public Works and Public Works, and that's that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I just, after reading the police report, it's not, I don't think he's the legal owner of the vehicle. It's his girlfriend that's the legal owner, so if we make a payment, it should be to her.
We won't be able to pay them anyway. What we'll have to do is either pay, they'll either have to get it repaired and submit the bills to us for repair, or possibly, we can get a bill after repair from Dave Williams and pay that. But we can't, we can't pay them directly, my understanding.
Would you prefer that I amend the motion that we pay Williams or a, any other repair service?
Yes, yeah, and the amount of...
And the amount that's presented to us today.
Right, $275.99.
Second that.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all those in favor of making a payment? I guess they're led into it, doesn't it?
Aye.
Want you to know the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Okay, get that, any opposed? That brings us down to the bond issues. I think you got a letter and an ordinance number from, regarding the bonds. So get a motion to discuss?
We didn't get one, did we?
No.
Did y'all not get one?
No.
Just the water rate increase.
The water rate increase, okay. No, you're right.
It's not even on the agenda.
I move to table this to our next meeting.
Okay.
On the agenda.
I'll second that.
Yeah, we didn't get it, but, I mean, Mr. Mayor.
No, I was...
To increase the water rates, is that what?
No, that's, yeah.
Came through today.
We got this.
Well, that's different, that's all I can remember.
That's different than the bonds.
We got a resolution.
It's a resolution.
By my knowledge.
I'm doing three things at once here, and it's not working.
I think we're... All right, we got a motion to defer.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think the bond company did provide us a, a, an ordinance when they did the referendum, or not referendum, but the resolution. And I think there is a copy of that floating around somewhere, so I'll go back through my own stuff, but him should have a copy of that, too, I think, thinking he was going to look that over, make sure we were going to read that.
No, we've been waiting until...
That is on the back, but we still, y'all didn't get a copy of that either, did we? The resolution?
In the packet that was offered when the resolution was brought to the table, this was included.
There's no ordinance.
That's 662, what I've got a number on.
That's the resolution, oh, my apology. 663.
Maybe it wasn't.
You don't have the ordinance?
All right, we'll just go ahead and move to defer, all those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Okay.
662, we already approved this, right?
We did, we did approve the resolution, that's correct.
Okay.
All right, motion to discuss Public Works building?
So moved, second.
We, it's really, and this really isn't the second bid, what we have is, we had a, well, I guess in a way it is, we had to have the building redesigned for additional concrete work and relocating the building. We're at the point now, we received a cost, a bid from Barrows Construction, and actually, it came in way over what I had anticipated. So we went back, and to be honest with you, what it is was $230,000. So I went back and asked them to break out their bids for their building, and this was turnkey. This was walk right into a brand-new building and everything. We had eliminated two overhead doors, because when we moved it down below, we didn't have the turnaround area. We're going to pull in, but not pull out like what we had. So, of course, we got a, it's a different metal building, it's a one that's, will be a category four, which then beats all the codes and everything. What I asked for them to come back on was a price on the building and the concrete, and basically, without any of the interior work, we came up to about $148,000. Now, that's with us basically being the contractor. What we'd be doing is bidding out the components, in essence, or waiving the bids for the components. But we could also put the bids out for the electrical, mechanical, and plumbing. But for the building, concrete, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, and a lift in there, were around $100, probably with the lift, about $155,000.
I'm sorry, Mr. American, I thought you just said about $145,000 for the concrete and the shell.
No, $112 for the concrete and the shell.
$112.
We had, for the plumbing, mechanical, and electrical, it brings up, and then plus the lift, we're around $155,000. Now, that doesn't include the finishing out of the interior walls or interior doors.
What about insulation?
Oh, insulation.
Insulation is in that?
Yes.
Wasn't there supposed to be some gas heaters hung from the ceiling or something?
That's, that's, the mechanical, when I say mechanical, MEP, mechanical, electrical and plumbing, mechanical, and instead of gas heaters, we went back with a radiant heat system. So it would help us on more energy efficient.
Let me, let me ask you this, what do you, what, what, what are you considering the finishing out that's not being done?
Interior stud walls, sheet rock, two layers of sheet rock.
There's not a bathroom being framed out or anything like that?
Well, that'd be part of the walls, interior walls, there's not a lot of interior walls.
That one would be.
But it includes the bathroom being, being plumbed and finished.
But just, there's no privacy to it.
But no, no interior walls at this point, that's true, yeah. And no interior walls for storage.
Tarps, I've always been a believer in tarps.
When we first approved this, it was for $125,000, give or take, it might have been a year ago, and it's getting pretty close.
Plus, plus the lift, I think.
Plus the lift. And at the time, we were told that there was only one company that would do this, and so that's why there was only one bid achieved for the building.
I, I wasn't here to...
I, I understand, I'm just reiterating my thoughts on the process when it took place. And since we have obviously not been in a hurry to build this building, would it behoove us to put the bids out for the building? I'm just going to raise the question.
We can. The other option, in my feeling, if you all want to know the truth, is to hold off. I'm not even comfortable at this point in time with our budget and everything. I mean, we've, we've got $125,000, but if we go over, I mean, if we're going to spend another $25,000, $50,000, I, I think I'd be better to see that we start raising some more income in the street department and the water and sewers, and hold off for a little bit. I mean, that's one option. The other option is to go ahead and put it out as separate bids, like what I just suggested, going ahead and doing the building with the, you want to, you want to combine the concrete and the metal building, because when you're doing the building, metal building, you got your anchor bolts and you want to make sure they're all coordinated. The rest of it can be subbed and bid out separately. Basically, we'd be acting as our own subs, our own general. We've got a little bit of issue with coordination on that, but we can also work that around. So we're still, you know, we may be looking, and again, we may want to wait and look at our mid-year budget to see where we are next month before we make a final decision. That's kind of where I'm coming from, and having a group, instead of us saying, let's go ahead and do this and put it out, let's see where, see, make sure we've got an extra $25,000 to $30,000 or more.
Waited all this time, what's a month?
Mr. McQuaid?
Also, since we're going to keep the other building, it still has some deferred maintenance probably that needs to be done on it, correct, or not? Isn't that so?
I'm sure there is.
Well, I mean, you look at it, and then it's...
Yeah, I mean, we need, we need...
We're going to keep it serviceable, it needs some...
Right.
It probably needs 15, 20 grands spent on it.
I mean, we need, we need to caulk it and probably wouldn't have to hurt to put the insulation back and the, and the paint, and, like you said, deferred maintenance.
Nothing else, we're going to have to at least dress that.
Yep. I don't have a sugar on that.
But I, I'll make a motion that we, we put this off until after the mid-year budget review and...
Second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Ms. Snyder?
How long can we safely put this off for our employees? We get an emergency clause, this should be done before winter time?
Basically.
We did an emergency clause in everything, because this needs to be done before this winter, so how long can we safely put it off?
Well, it's needed, without a doubt. But I'm, I'm not, I mean, if nothing else, we may have to just go back in and do some maintenance on the building, on the existing building. I mean, if, you know, we're, it just depends on our budget, to be honest with you. I'm not, I don't want to, want to get us in a bind of where we're having to take out money for, I mean, we need it, without a doubt, but we may have to take, it's going to be easier to take the $20,000 out, to put into deferred maintenance and maintenance on the existing, than it might be to come up with an extra $50,000.
And have you discussed this with Twain, I assume?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So we got a motion to defer until after our mid-year budget, any further discussion?
Can I ask one question? If you've already reserved $125,000 for the building, the $20,000 that you want to pull out for maintenance could not come out of that $125,000, could it?
Sure, it could.
But that's reserved for the new building.
Well, you're the council, you can take it wherever you want.
Oh, I mean, we'd have to change that, yeah, okay.
I don't know whether we've, I mean, we've got the money in there, I don't know whether it's a specific line item that says maintenance building.
At this point now, how much of our income from sales tax is going into public works? I know we divided, used to be half goes into administrative and the other half goes into public works, but we changed that, and we were discussing that a couple of weeks ago. And we had to amend it, and it was illegal, and on and on, so where are we now, exactly? How much money?
I don't remember, to be honest with you, Joyce. I remember seeing that, but I don't remember the exact figures on what percentage.
Well, yeah, because I remember...
Part of it goes into streets.
Back in about 2005 or '06, we had to undo what we had done and...
Isn't done half of it going to our general revenue and half going to...
It was supposed to.
Public works.
But we fiddled around with it back in about 2007, and I just wondered where we were now, because it sounds to me like...
Well, we haven't changed anything.
Okay, well, it sounds to me like public works is hurting for money.
Well, of course.
Yeah.
Who is it?
But maybe we need to look at how we distribute our sales tax money.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
That brings us down to, and we've deferred our discussion of the rezoning from R1 to C1, and I, before we go on from that, I'm assuming the council realized this is from, this is being referred from the Planning Commission's decision. So look in, look in your packets, Planning Commission voted to deny this, and so that's what this is about. All right, that brings us up to our conversation down at Municipal League on ordinance 2223.
Move to discuss.
Second.
All right. We, at the Municipal League Conference, we talked to, I talked to both Municipal League attorneys, and also I went and talked to ACLU. Basically, neither one of them are in a position to be proactive in defiling lawsuits against the state, which is kind of what we knew anyway from the Municipal League. Their basic comments was, we pretty much have to wait and see where we are, and wait until somebody takes action against us before we can do anything. In act, talking to the ACLU again, there's, gets even more confusing with them getting involved, because it is, they are a civil rights and not criminal rights, and our ordinance, basically, when we, somebody violates it, it becomes a criminal offense and not a civil offense. offense. So that kicks the civil ACLU out of it in that respect. That's not to say something can't happen through there. Tom, did you, Bob, you talked to Paul, you want to, you have anything you want to add?
Well, you know, what, the information that I got down there is sort of contradicted by the letter that somebody, Mr. Weaver handed out today, but I was, the people that I talked through down there felt that all of our categories of protection were mentioned in state law, so that they were all covered. However, we have a letter now from the attorney in Fayetteville that says we have one, one category that's not covered, and that might cause us some trouble, so I guess we really do need to look at that, be sure about it.
What does our attorney say?
That's what happened. We had about an hour-long discussion in the city attorney's meetings with a couple of the state legislators, and a couple of the state legislators that were there, their expressed opinion was very much similar to what's in that letter, that there may be problems with, with one of the areas of protection. They weren't going to say for sure that they would, how they would, because they, they may end up having to take the other side at some point. I also spoke with Mr. Williams, who's been the city attorney in Fayetteville for, I think, going on twenty-five, twenty-six years, something like that, and also to a couple of the deputy city attorneys for Little Rock and a couple of the other cities that have passed somewhat similar ordinances, and they all tend to agree that there, there may be this one area that's not covered somewhere else, although I think the Little Rock Attorney's office kind of thinks that they're all covered. They all seem to anticipate the state will file some kind of action probably fairly shortly after the twenty-second, because the law on the state level takes effect on the twenty-second.
Against us?
They don't at this point. There, the, there's no consensus among the different city attorneys, but they expect some kind of attack either against directly us, because ours is the most strict, apparently, from their reading, or against all the cities that have passed similar ordinances.
So does that mean, when, when you talked to Municipal League last time, they said that they weren't in the business of filing, but they were in the business of defending us, so does that mean?
Maybe.
Oh, maybe, I didn't catch the maybe.
Yeah, and I also spoke with a couple of their attorneys, of course, the, the real call will come from the head of the Municipal League, Don Zimmerman, and probably Mark Hayes' input heavily into that. But we've been, over the last several years, we've had a couple of times that they have denied us coverage or denied to represent us. On those occasions, we have the right to go down and ask the board to cover us, and when we have availed ourselves of that, we've been pretty successful in getting the Municipal League to pick up some kind of coverage. They don't always cover the potential of any lost monies from the city, but they will pick up representation sometimes.
Since that wouldn't be then a criminal, because we wouldn't have somebody going against our ordinance, but it'd be the state coming at us, would the ACLU then be interested in that case?
I think the way that the anticipated attack would be, it would be still in the criminal realm, so the ACLU would still probably, I didn't talk directly with them, I know I talked, the mayor talked to them more, so he may have a better perspective on that, but I still think that they probably would, would want to sidestep out of that one.
Two questions, and that is, is the Municipal League fall under as a state agency?
Is it not some kind of a state agency? Secondly, is it, is it funded by the state?
My understanding of the defense fund is it's funded by contributions made by assessments against the cities, and my understanding is not really, it is a private organization, it is not part of the state itself.
Ms. Snyder?
Okay, just to clarify, all of us that went all took different classes, and we talked with different people, so it wasn't like all of us in one room hearing all the same thing and interpreting different. We all got different responses. My biggest response was in regards to what you just said, Tim, about the state maybe coming after us, is when their law passes on the twenty-second, ours becomes ineffectual, and unless we would try to take action on someone, they couldn't do anything, because to them it doesn't exist anymore. Now, that was what I was told and warned against. I would like to see these changes made, because that's the other thing that everybody I talked to, their, that was their biggest problem, was the socioeconomic wording. They understand the point we were making and think it's a good idea, it just wasn't, well, it's like one word, well, you know, but yeah, I'd like to see that redone, that part, I think we should look into that. But in the meantime, we're just kind of, people know we're trying to protect them, that's all we can do. If the state wants to try to tie our hands, they can try all they want, until we have an incident, nothing's going to happen.
I need some, I don't remember coming across the term socioeconomic background in the ordinance that we wrote, I need a little bit of history on this. Does the state somewhere define socioeconomic background? Because that's, this is one of these garbage can things that can mean literally anything, depending on what your point of view is. How did we get into this debate on, is it, is the thought that our ordinance invades something here or doesn't cover, what's the history of this? What's, I don't understand it.
Well, it has to do with, the state statute is an intrastate prohibition. It only involves commerce within the state of Arkansas. The argument that the attorneys are looking at who, cities have passed these ordinances, is that it is an intrastate, it's between all the states, commerce, and that these are protected rights under different portions of our state law, only there is no state law, because the socioeconomic usually only refers to housing within the state, and it doesn't.
Well, yeah.
And so therefore, there's not the argument that it's a violation, the state law being a violation of the Interstate Commerce Act and, from the United States.
Now, what state law are we referring to here, exactly?
The one that they have passed that will take effect on the twenty-second.
That gives the churches the right to discriminate without legal interference, or?
No, that's a, that's a, that's another bill.
Okay, but which, okay, which one do they claim is intrastate and interferes with? And are they claiming that our ordinance interferes with the limits on socioeconomic backgrounds?
The, the one that we're discussing is the one that would invalidate potentially two-two-two-three.
The one that we can't pass a law saying that we.
That we can't pass a law.
You can't pass an anti, anti-discrimination law, yeah.
Giving, giving a new protected class.
Yeah, okay.
Then the argument that is being made on the side of the cities typically that are, that have passed these type of ordinances, is that we are not protecting a new class, we are protecting classes that have already been recognized somewhere else in law.
Hmm, okay.
Only there is an argument, at least somewhat, that socioeconomic, which is listed as part of what is protected in our ordinance, is not otherwise protected elsewhere in state or federal law.
Okay, socioeconomic then would refer to our outlawing discrimination in businesses? Is that where the economic comes in? I, I, I'm just, I just want to get this straight, you know, and I'm sorry if I may have people's time.
The legislatures that were there talked about, well, we don't think you could say, let's say, business XYZ is selling product A, and someone walks in off the street who is low income, and they say, we're not going to sell our product to anyone that's low income. They're saying that there is no protected class for that in the federal or state law, so we wouldn't be able to enforce our ordinance against the business for not letting people of lower income or higher income. If they want to distinguish who their customers are based on income, they can probably get away with that. And our ordinance says they can't.
We didn't mention, no, we didn't mention income.
It's, it's in the ordinance.
Socioeconomic is in that ordinance.
Okay, so where does this become intrastate? And how do they, it sounds, it sounds to me like they're really trying very hard to get into a Fourteenth Amendment issue here. That, that's where they're going with this. This is going to end up in, being a Fourteenth Amendment violation in federal court, is where this is going if they keep on this way, but are they saying that, that we had no right to pass that ordinance because there was an existing ordinance at the time, because there wasn't?
No, they're saying that we don't have a right to grant protective classes. The argument from the city's perspective would, would more than likely, if it goes to court, is we're not creating a new protected class, we're simply establishing a remedy on the local level for people who violate, whose rights are violated.
And who are not mentioned in other ordinances, and they're not saying that we're not allowed to protect people that the state.
We can't add people for protection.
We can only add people that the state says we can protect?
Yes.
Wow.
Is their argument, the state and the federal.
Okay, guys.
Understand that nobody in this discussion is standing on firm ground. These are all speculations on the part of the North Little Rock, the Little Rock attorney, who finds mentions in other portions of state law, like the anti-bullying thing that was passed that mentions, I think, gay students, that the mere mention of minorities in various and sundry laws somehow comes together and provides an umbrella to protect these ordinances that have been passed by Little Rock, North Little Rock, what Fayetteville's doing and what Eureka Springs is doing. So nobody is sure about any of this.
Well, yeah, we're kind of breaking new ground here, and, yeah, I, I think it, it's, it's going to be a turf war, really, was what it is. We're the state, and you can't tell us that we can't do this, and we're the little guys, and you can't interfere with our life, because it's our town, yeah.
That's the whole rule thing that they're stepping all over us on.
Yeah, well, it's, it's.
They're bullies, it's illegal for them.
Mr. Williams.
We're used to that here.
Question for the attorney. When we started this, we said at, at the time, and we, we did the referendum, and we passed, it's our ordinance is on the books, it is an ordinance, and it's enforceable until the twenty-second, and then we're going to find out what happens. So if we make, decided to fix socioeconomic, go back and.
Tweak.
Tweak ours a little bit, we can't, should we do that before the twenty-second, or should we just leave it as it is and let it stand and not be thinking around with it and wait?
That is the perceived weakness of our ordinance, is, is that particular thing. Mr. Williams, the city attorney for Fayetteville, strongly suggests that we change it before the twenty-second. Speaking with several of the other attorneys, they don't see a need to, the way I understand it, do it immediately, but they all, not all, most, think it is something that does need tweaked at some point.
How would we change it? Excuse me?
Just remove that language. Specifically, talks about socioeconomic.
Okay.
So what is your recommendation, based on you got, you said some said do it and some wait, and then one says don't, so let's hear from our city attorney what he says we should do with our ordinance?
If we're convinced that we're going to be sued very quickly, it would be better to do it before the twenty-second. If, on the other hand, the city is more inclined to lean toward what Ms. Snyder was told, that we probably won't get sued unless we enforce our ordinance at some point, then it's not as imperative to get it done. But I kind of lean to the idea that certain of the attorney general's staff was also present there, and I got the hint that we might get zapped on the twenty-third.
Okay, well, then let's do, let's do this.
Ms. Snyder?
Okay. My understanding of the state law situation was, once theirs goes into effect, ours is virtually not there, so, meaning we cannot take action against someone. If we want to reword, that's not taking action against someone, we should be safe. So we can go ahead and tweak all we want, as long as we don't try to enforce. That's the big difference. And like I said, all of us, we're in different classes, talking to different people, that's why we're having this. I think we need to tweak, change words, I don't think we have to have it done in five days, but that's my personal opinion from the people I talked with.
I think so.
Mr. McClain?
The, you think the chances are more than likely, if they come after one, they'll come after all? I mean, kind of like a.
One what?
Class action.
Cities.
One city, yeah, I mean, they're, they're, so, you know.
Most of the other ordinances specifically apply to interaction with the city, either contracting directly with the city or providing services with the city. Ours is much broader. Ours could very well be the one that gets picked if they don't want to go, do a broad attack on, and have to face down several at once.
So the others.
Ours is, ours is the most broad.
I see, we, they, they're not passing the same thing that we passed.
No.
Or they have not passed the same thing.
Except for Fayetteville. Fayetteville, they're, what they're trying to pass, but that won't be until September.
Yes, the, the one Fayetteville is working on, if it passes in September, will be nearly as broad as ours, only it will not have the socioeconomic material in it.
So it would be, if, if you're sitting down at the state and you want to set an example when your, your last name starts with a B and an H and a few others that we, we know and love dearly, we would assume that we would probably, being the black sheep of the cities of this state, would probably be the one they would come towards, and then at which point, then we would have asked the Municipal League if, if they're going to defend us, and that's, now it's a maybe, which is probably a huge maybe. So I just remember when we started this process, we knew that it wasn't just going to end with two-two-two-three, that it was too forward-thinking and, 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 and out there for the political climate of this state. So I guess we're, we're left with, if, and you just said we could, we should tweak it before the twenty-third, so ideally could, if we made a motion and asked you to take this wording and make the necessary changes to that, we would have to have a special meeting to get it approved before the twenty-third.
Second.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was what you were waiting to do, make a motion, weren't you?
Discussion?
Yeah, is that a motion?
Yes, sir, it's a motion.
Now it is.
And we had a second, okay, now we got a discussion.
Discussion, okay. We have worked too hard and come too far to back off on this now. I, I think David put it very well, I understand exactly where he's coming from, yeah, I think we are going to be made example of, because we have always been the maverick in this state. We are always objecting to things, and I think there is a little bit of that, let's teach those dumb hippies in the northwest corner a lesson, let's come down there. No, I'm, I'm all for it, yes, we need to go and do this, I just don't want to quit now, we worked too hard, we have too much invested in this.
Mr. McClain?
Just want to say this once again, as I did last meeting, that it's all fine and good, and, and I appreciate it, but if, if the state should decide to sue the city, then, then I'm really hard-pressed to tie up a lot of money with the city attorney or any other attorneys, when here we are trying to figure out how to pay for a public works building that we need desperately, or even how to just rep. even how to disrepair the one we have, and other projects in town that we so desperately need. You know, we have things that need to come first, so, and this could be, it could be very expensive, and I would be terribly, terribly remiss in seeing it drain the city coffers.
Okay, well, can I reply to that?
All right, go ahead.
Um, I don't think we should use our money. There are an awful lot of people that are invested in this. This is another one of these things that is reflecting a change in attitude over the entire country. People are thinking about a lot of things that they haven't thought about before, and if, no, I don't think we should use our own money. I think we should, if we are put in a position of jeopardy, we're being sued, I think we should make a nationwide appeal for funds. And, you know, let's, let's, okay, let's bring it on.
Ms. Snyder.
I don't think we have to use our own money. I think we can get support from other people.
Hey, I agree with that, but just a thought, also keep in mind, if they come after us when we kick their butt, we get to go ahead and demand expenses paid.
Not necessarily.
If it's filed properly, yes.
Uh, no, it's, it's still a court's decision.
Okay, so we have to file it that way too, but we could, and we probably would in view of the situation.
You're looking at probably 15 years down the road, too.
I don't care, in your face, slapping them.
I'm just, I'm a little unclear. When Act 137 becomes law, it says that you cannot pass any legislation-
Or enforce.
Right. So, how could they come after us on the 23rd if we haven't enforced it?
They could get, seek a mandamus or a prohibition asking that we be told by a judge never to enforce.
So, what does that do to us?
That basically validates it so that we can't ever use the ordinance against anyone.
Oh, so notice what they would do if they did rid of mandamus and we could, they could sit there and say, you can enforce this, so we couldn't do it later on down the road to challenge them.
Correct.
James?
The state understands that they're not on firm ground on this one either because of the questions that have been raised by the Little Rock attorneys. They may not have the ability to do that. It will ultimately end up in court of law, it's whose nickel is going to be paying for it. But I agree with Joyce, we have so much invested in this. This is a simple matter, we can take care of this in about 10 minutes in a special meeting. And the motion is to ask the city attorney to delete the appropriate words in relationship to socio-economic status, and, you know, it, it just protects us from, from the what-ifs, and we'll, we'll address those other issues as they come toward us. But right now, if, if one attorney thinks that we should amend this by the 22nd, then we need to do that.
I agree.
Any further discussion? All right, so we got a motion to have a special meeting, special hearing, special meeting?
No, I think the motion was for the city's attorney-
City attorney.
To make the changes in our 2223 that has been put forth by this consultation letter from Kit Williams of Fayetteville.
For, I would add to that, for a special meeting before the 22nd.
That's amended.
It's already in there.
It's already, oh, it's in there, okay. Maybe you ought to read it back to us.
What is the motion?
Mr. McLeod made a motion to ask the attorney to tweak the ordinance and then have a special meeting, and Mr. DeVito seconded. And it was implied that it would involve the language.
Okay. Can we tweak it accordingly?
All right, everybody understand the motion? Okay, all those in favor, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Mr. Weaver?
If I may, just a moment. Mr. Williams, who wrote the letter, did say at one point that he might be willing to come over and address the council with council's permission. I will extend an invitation, if we have a special meeting, for him to come over. Or if you don't want him here, I won't have him here. But he said he might, he would be willing if it was, didn't otherwise interfere with his schedules.
You mean as a visitor or as a paid-
Why, we're doing what he said. Why should he drive over here for, to tell us what we already know?
He, he has certainly worked on this a lot longer than anyone else in the state because Fayetteville was the first one to pass this type of ordinance, and then got theirs repealed when their city vote came down. So, he has spent hundreds of hours, literally, on this compared to most of the other attorneys in the state.
It would be nice-
Does he want to help you defend us with the state?
He, he, he said he intends, if the state brings action against more than one town, to look at putting together cooperative of city attorneys to try to-
So politically, then we should let him talk to us?
We, we, you may want to hear from him, it's, it's up to you.
I think it'd be a good idea.
Okay.
If it can be scheduled, then, then fine.
Yeah, you know, if it, if it works out, we'll-
In view of the time period, we need to schedule right now for a special meeting.
Well, how about next Monday?
Works for me.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
The boss, what does the boss say back here?
Um, next Monday is good for your-
I'm going to be gone.
Oh.
Which doesn't matter, I mean, James can sit in as, as chair, I mean, it's just, I'm going to be out next week.
Are you okay with that, if we-
Uh, yeah.
What about Friday?
It's called the whole week, he said, so one-
No, that's what I'm saying, Friday.
No, we can do it Friday, if-
Well, the 23rd is Thursday.
It goes into effect the 22nd.
Oh, okay.
What about this Friday, Tim?
I think that it can be tweaked by then, and if you want to have the other attorney here, probably having it in the late afternoon or evening would, would probably more likely accommodate his schedule.
Because as much as our mayor said, I think he needs to be here too.
Why don't we go ahead and see if he can be here on Friday afternoon and what his schedule is?
Just, it, it just depends on the timing, I have, I have a commitment for widespread panic.
Widespread pain?
At the amp.
Oh.
I, I have one too, but mine's until later.
I'll bring the Valium.
That's an anxiety crisis, though.
Yeah.
Okay, Friday, Wednesday.
So, we'll tentatively say on Friday, we'll see what we can do with Mr. Williams.
Send an email of whatever date it comes out to be.
Oh, that's a phone call to me, guys.
All right, um-
Now, we're not done with that topic.
We're not.
All right, what's your next, what's your other?
Because you didn't split it. Okay, the update Bob is going to have to help me with, that we found out that Heather's both going, what? When we make a motion to waive the reading on an ordinance, to read by title only, we can do all three readings by title only in one meeting with no emergency clause. They have a whole slew of brand-new laws.
Mickey, I'm sorry, that's in regards to this ordinance?
No, that's, that's why I said this needed to be separate. The municipal league conference, the update. That's why this was supposed to be two things.
I'm sorry.
So, there's a whole slew of new council laws that are astounding, and that's one of them. What, Terry?
Do you have more?
Yes.
Well, go on, pardon me.
Well, you're, oh, God. Okay, anyway, so all we need is a two-thirds vote, right, to do it all in one meeting, we don't need an emergency clause.
Uh, I don't know.
It's always been that way.
Brand, no, brand-new law, no. One night?
It takes-
No emergency clause?
But what would people explain about?
Somebody else would like to explain to her?
That's what they presented as a brand-new law.
I'll have to hear from our attorney.
I'll see it, Brett, first.
Basically, the rule has always been that you can have three readings on a bill in one night. It doesn't take effect without an emergency clause, 4/30.
The first time, you have to read the whole thing.
No.
That's what they said the change was, this is by title only.
We have always done that, we have always done that on the first reading.
Okay, well, they said this is by title only, on all three and no emergency.
I'm having trouble listening to the attorney, sorry.
There have been towns all along that have read their ordinances by title only. We have always chosen, or the council, I think, has always chosen, as long as I can remember, even long before I was the city attorney, to read it at least the first time completely through because, one thing, the people at home don't have the ordinance in front of them.
Well, and that's what we brought up.
Wait, 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 all right.
So, but, no, I think we've, literally, we could have always just read the title. But there was always a feeling, I think, at least among a lot of people that I've discussed it with, because this has been brought up a couple of years ago by some council members too, could we just do that? There was, there's, there's a feeling in town, I think, among a lot of people, since this is all videoed and seen, that, that it would be an attempt by a council if they only read title only and never read the whole ordinance, that they would be trying to sneak something through, hide something from someone, that we're, we're exposing everything to the open air by reading it at least the first time.
Not the U.S. Congress.
Transparency.
They were saying this was a brand-new law that, and we had talked about that, doing it both ways, and they said it's new, and if you do use emergency clause, it's got to be a specific reason.
It's always been part of the emergency clause.
Well, that's what I, it's always for the health, welfare, and safety, right?
Well, that, those are three of the key words, but there is always a, a dictate of what that means.
What's that thought?
There, there is always a, a portion of the emergency clause that says for the financial well-being, for, to protect the health of, by stopping traffic, there, there's always more to that than those three magic words. Those three magic words have got to be there.
Well, they did say-
Or at least one of them does.
We must now have a specific reason for an emergency clause, whatever that is.
State, state laws basically always said that. It just, it, they, they tried to make it because a lot, a lot of cities were just passing those three words and not ever giving any explanation.
Do you remember the simple majority part of the two-thirds vote? For passage of something? All it took was a two-thirds vote of who was there? Okay, simple majority vote as opposed to, there's six councilmen here, it's a simple majority vote of only those people who are here. So, if only four people are here, simple majority would still be three, which is a tie if we're all here. They said this is a new law. I'm bringing these up so the people know something's going on and y'all need to check into them, but that's it said.
I think that one is cities of second class, but I can look. I didn't, I didn't hear him mention that, but I know the cities of second class were trying to push that through at one point.
Okay, well, that, yeah, that was another one. There were several, do you remember what some of the other ones were that we were like, what? God, there were some.
The new laws? Well, they went, they went through the whole book of important changes, which Act 137 and the Religious Freedom Act were not important to anybody in Little Rock, they skipped right over those.
Those were, those were-
No, they talked about, because they also referred to it, the Reefer Act.
Well, but not in the, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we only consider laws as mere suggestions anyhow, so.
But anyway, but apparently there are a bunch of new ones that we should probably get up to date on, okay?
But I didn't hear that discussion of skipping the three readings, it being a new law.
That was when I went up to the microphone to ask-
I heard that, and that was a question that was asked.
Yeah, that was when I went up there and asked him the question because I-
It wasn't any law, no.
And when she was saying, braver, braver.
Anne?
Mickey, there's a book downstairs of the new legislation.
I've got that, yeah.
Well, that's where you probably would want to look for it.
I don't need it, they need it.
I thought you were interested in it.
But it was very informa, I thought it was more informative this time than it's ever been.
Anything else?
Nope. See why it was two issues?
All right, agenda setting. Bob, you got anything?
Well, I don't have an item, but I have a question. If we're going to consider, you know, the sewer bond and, and when we're talking about budget stuff, could we have Mr. Clark attend those meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and he will be at, at the workshops, of course, yeah. And that's my fault, we've got, the letter I got, what we, and I don't know why I didn't get it distributed, that ordinance was from our, from the bond attorney adjusting water rates. We've got to have that ordinance passed, that's what that ordinance was.
Say that again?
The bond attorney, we, y'all have a copy of the ordinance in there? Looks like the change in the water rates?
Somewhere, yeah.
Tonight?
No, it's in our packet tonight.
That's the ordinance that we were supposed to look at, that's the attorney, where's my letter, here?
It's not, that's not on the agenda, that's just for our information?
It was on the agenda, we went by it, because that's where I was confused.
It wasn't on the agenda.
It's not on my agenda.
This is about changing the water rates.
The bond thing, yes, it is.
The change in the water, uh-
The bond or the water?
That is, yes, but that has got to do with the bond issue. We have to do that, read this, it's not changing the water rates, it's reaffirming the water rates.
Which was water.
Reaffirming.
Three percent increase.
Yeah, discussion of that, bonds in regards to water.
All right, this is a letter from, from the bond attorney. Says, "Attached for your review and references a draft ordinance intended to establish and confirm the existing water rate structure. Please review the ordinance to make sure that I've correctly read the current rates. It's my understanding sewer rates have not been increased since the council adopted ordinance on June 23, 2008. Assuming this is the case, the city does not need to adopt another ordinance confirming the sewer rates." And then he talks about the draft water rates confirmation ordinance is acceptable, please put it before the council. But anyway, we'll bring that back next meeting.
With numbers on it.
Yeah, and, and in addition, could you provide us a copy of that letter? Because what you just read kind of just went right over my head.
Yeah, sure. And I apologize, that should have been part of that package. We can get that taken care of.
Thank you.
May I ask for clarification on something?
Yes.
The rules for changing water rates are different than the rules for changing sewer rates, right? The water rates can be changed by council or the finance director, but sewer has to-
Have a public hearing.
Okay. I just want to mention that when this landed on the desk today, I looked at what's in the codebook, and each of these six figures is a three percent increase.
We'll get back, we'll look at that.
From what's in the codebook.
Okay, that shouldn't, we'll, we'll double-check where we are. I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas?
Oh, I have no items to add to the agenda.
Ms. McClain, you got anything?
I don't think so.
Nothing here.
Nothing. I know, Sean.
And agenda? No, thank you.
All right, city comments. Joyce, we'll go back in that direction.
Um, no, except if, if I'm the last one to know it, I apologize, but you can play, pay your personal property taxes online. You just have to fill out the little number thing, and I did that today, and not that I want to hurry you people up, but it would be kind of nice, I mean, it's real easy to do now, okay.
Thank you, Joyce.
One of the interesting classes that I took at municipal league was actually about food trucks and the issues that many cities are being hit with in that regard. One of the things that Fort Smith has done, and they had an excellent ordinance, did you ever get yours? Okay, I never did. One of the things that Fort Smith did in regards to food trucks and not interfering with the brick-and-mortar restaurants was to allow them in the public right-of-way between 9:00 PM and 2:00 AM downtown. I mean, say, don't interfere with the local restaurants, so around here, usually close by eight, couple are nine or 10. But it was really kind of neat because it was downtown in the shopping district where people are hanging out, and it wasn't interfering, and it was for a four-hour period. That's just one of the things they did, but Bob's got a copy of their ordinance and I'm supposed to, and we can always go through that, and that'll help on our workshop.
No comment?
I'm surprised.
He's not supposed to be here.
Mr. Weaver?
I'd like to thank Eileen and Teresa for the fifth annual Flur Delicious, which is now well beyond a weekend, into about a 10-day event. Talked to a number of restaurants, all the ones that were participating were sold out. I think it was a good weekend, it's turned it into an attraction that's drawing people from probably a five or six state-